Okay, great, so let's get started. So, welcome to the AXIS special session. It's great to see everybody here. So this is going to be 90 minutes, and we're going to start out with our PI, Chris Reynolds, giving you an overview of the instrument and the satellite.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. So yes, great pleasure to be here to talk about AXIS, and thank you all for turning up. It looks like I've got a room that's too small, so apologies. There are some free chairs if you want to try to filter through. So, early last October, we received a very exciting news that AXIS has been selected for Phase A study. So this now puts us, we have quite a busy year coming up. We're taking the AXIS design to the next level, and we're now in this competition with Prima, but we are very excited about the possibilities that AXIS presents. So this session is going to be focusing on the science of AXIS, and this is mapping out the session. We'll hear from some of my amazing science team colleagues about massive black hole formation, about galactic feedback with Axis, about time domain science, the TDAM time domain, and the multi-messenger science, some opportunities of the Galactic Place Survey that will be an important part of our program. And then, at the end, Eric Curran, who's the Deputy PI of Axis, will be telling you about how you can get involved and the guest observer, sorry, I said the general observer, science opportunities that Axis represents. As you will see, it's to some extent, you know, the most important part of the program. I'm going to kick things off by just giving a, you know, orienting us all to the actual mission of Axis, what is Axis, the mission architecture of Axis, and discussing a little bit some of the technology that enables Axis. That will sort of set the scene for this discussion. This works. Okay, so what's the motivation for Axis? We've got to think through to, one of the big questions that we will be addressing in the 2030s, what will be the main facilities that will be operating in the 2030s? Of course, to a very large extent, this was the decadal survey. The 2020 decadal survey was trying to do, was trying to project through to that point. So, you know, this is the current NASA fleet chart. And, yes, yeah, everything there, we hope to, very much hope to still be operating in the 2030s. And I hope Grizom will be too. I put a little more jinx here, so it's probably going to box you with Grizom. But, you know, we're getting a glimpse of what 2030s astrophysics looks like. We're already going to listen to that from JWST. You know, what we'll be doing with bread and butter of astrophysics being in the 2030s, it'll be galactic evolution out to a redshift of 15, okay, out to the redshifts that we've just started to bloom now with JWST. It'll be AGM and black hole evolution out to redshifts of 10 or beyond. It'll be, you know, time domain astronomy, but not just the nearby transient objects, you know, transient objects out to high redshifts. There'll be a real resurgence of stellar astrophysics to all of this. I mean, you know, it's not that long ago that people were telling me stellar astrophysics is boring and dumb, but it's not. And every time we bring a new facility like LIGO online, you know, what on earth are these remnants we're getting? So there's a resurgence of stellar astrophysics. And then, of course, exoplanets. So exoplanet characterization is a particular research life. If you look at this, you know, as an extra astronomer, you can start to realize that extra astronomy is the left behind. You know, the X-ray facilities that we currently have or are currently, you know, are actually approved, are not capable of catching up with this frontier. And so that's what Axis is. Axis is aimed at, you know, catching back up with this frontier and bringing those crucial X-ray capabilities to bear on these questions. So, heart of Axis is a high-throughput, high angular resolution exo-observatory. Some of just the basic characteristics here. The high angular resolution. You have one and a half arc second half-power diameter on the axis, on the optical axis, with a very, very gradual degradation of that as you go away from, as you go across the image. Now, right on Axis, Chandra, I mean, Chandra is an exquisite optical system, truly is. Right on Axis, Chandra is sub-arc second. But because of the optical design, you know, as you start to off Axis, the images aberrate very quickly. So you can see here how the point-spread function of Chandra really starts to vary off Axis. With the new optical design we have, Axis don't have that. But coupled with that, we have about an order of magnitude more connecting area. So between, you know, depending upon the size energies, a factor of five to 10 times more connecting area, which you can see on this graph, this graph that compares into various missions. And we also, you know, we're making a different decision to Chandra in that our current baseline has us in low Earth orbit. And what that does is it gets inside the radiation belts, it gets in a very nice benign radiation environment. So the background of observations are very much, sorry, low surface brightness systems such as the outskirts of galaxy clusters or CGM of galaxies now becomes accessible to us, whereas it wasn't accessible to Chandra. And it just increases our sensitivity to point sources. So that's the way of doing it. So just to sort of drive home the point I was making a slide ago, you know, what this does is it now pushes the horizons of extra astronomy to be very comparable to the facilities that will be driving 2030s astrophysics. So here we have, you know, the horizons of various investigations, you know, like the redshifts out to which you can do that. And hopefully you can read that. This screen is pretty, it has mainly the rooms. It's not microscopic. But, you know, for example, the study of supermassive black holes, you know, we can push it out to the same horizons as JWST now can and also that LISA can as well. Same for studies of galaxy clusters. And then, I wrote this for all of these, but you might think of the point that we can now stand toe-to-toe in the facilities in the 2030s. So, this is my one slide on the science to Axis, because some of that's the point of the whole rest of this session. But the science program for Axis formally is divided into two parts. There's the so-called PI-led science program. This is 30%, only 30% of the totally available time. This at some level is the main science that we formally have to sell the mission on, the science deliverables are, where we're going through the proposal process for the pro. And there's three pillars to this, always three pillars to everything. The three pillars to this, there's the seed growth of the supermassive black holes. There's the galactic ecosystems, the feedback processes, both stellar feedback and black hole feedback processes in galaxies. And then, the time domain astronomy. So in particular, the diversity of stellar-driven explosions. So it's very large, including things like binary neutron star mergers. But 70% observing time is to you, is to the general observer. And, you know, it's just a high shot showing that. And the discovery space this opens up is huge. So just think about what you could do with a mission like this. And as Eric will lay out, we are wanting you to become more involved in this. We're putting, we've got a call open, the range of science working groups. We're putting together a science book that incorporates, you know, example cases for the general observer. This is always, you've been involved. But please hand on to Eric's talk to get details from that. And I also want to highlight that Axis is a very powerful time domain facility. Again, this is one respect in which, if you think of Axis as like the next evolution beyond Chandra, that doesn't capture this aspect. It's also sort of the next big step beyond Swift. Axis has the ability to respond to alerts up early to it from the ground. It's sort of the end-to-end chain of, you know, getting on target within two hours. And it also has an onboard transient alert system. It has an onboard transient detector. If we see something flash in our field, we can get that down to the ground in 10 minutes. So we have sort of on-demand communications with the satellite torch detectors, together with very agile satellite torch detectors have this time domain capability. So, yeah, it's like much of the rest of the session is about this or I won't say more about this. So I want to spend the rest of my talk telling you a little bit about the actual mission itself and a little bit about the technology here. So this is the basic mission architecture. Sorry for some of the formal stuff here, but there's a convergent evolution. These things end up looking more and more like Chandra every time you make a scientific decision. But there's a reason for that. So we have sort of classic geometry for X-ray search. We have an X-ray optic at this end. Yeah, X-rays come in from this direction, and then we have our detector over here. We're a low Earth orbit freeflyer with a low inclination, low orbit. This is very good radiation environment. And Northrop Grumman is providing our spacecraft. So very mature spacecraft provider, very mature spacecraft and spacecraft provider. If you sort of strip away the spacecrafty stuff and just come down to our telescope itself, the instrument, this is, we're a single-instrument observatory. So we have one X-ray optic, one X-ray optical array, which brings the X-rays down to one detector array at this end. The typical focal length is nine meters. So if you actually go back to, that's this observatory. This is a big observatory, you know, from tip to tip. We're 15 meters. And, you know, the sunshade is following the rays. We just fit inside the 11-meter bearing of the launch bed we're given. And from tip to tip on the wingspan is something like 16 meters. So very big, we're a big observatory once we're unfolded. So, the, come back here. The key enabling technology for this entire mission is the mirror. We're trying to build the most ambitious mirror, the X-ray mirror that's yet to be built. So this is the XMA, the X-ray mirror assembled at this end. And if you sort of look at the challenge, you'll need a mirror that is about 10 times lighter and about 10 times cheaper per unit surface area mirror than Chandra. So of course, you can't do this by just doing the same thing Chandra does. You have to have a new technology. And that new technology, which has been developed at the Next Generation Extra Optics that got out of the past 10-plus years, is our mirrors based upon single crystal silicon substrates. So I'll describe that a little bit in the next slide. But the basic idea is that we are leveraging what is actually a colossal investment, we're talking literally trillions of dollars, from the semiconductor industry. We're leveraging everything we can from them, including importantly, the machinery, literally the tooling that they give us. We're leveraging that as much as possible to be able to use our mirrors. So if you look at a mission like Chandra, for example, a large part of the cost for making the Chandra mirrors was not making the mirrors, it's making the machines that made the mirrors. And if we can instead use machines that are literally off-the-shelf from the semiconductor industry, that's a huge, huge savings. So that's, the design principle here is to maximize the use of, you know, the commercially available machines and substrates. And then also have a modular design turn mirror that enables it to actually be produced, that can actually be produced in a mass production plant. So what does this actually look like? So the heart, you know, our mirror is composed of segments that look like this. And that is what a real one actually, that is what a real one actually looks like. It is no coincidence, they're about the size of a cellphone, because that's what all the machines are set up to make. So we're leveraging commercial. So you take this segment here that's been cut out of a block, a single crystal silicon, polished, you coat it with a flavor of reflecting material, reading it for example, and that forms your basic reflecting surface. And these are actually some now quite old metrology data from one of Will Zhang's segments, showing that in fact across the, it's the power spectrum of the micro roughness in the surface. And you can see that across this very large range of spatial scales, down to the micron level, we are exceeding the Chandra micro roughness. So already the optics at the polished level are better than Chandra. And then what we do is we package those segments up into modules. So a well-formed X-ray mirror is a pair of mirrors. It's a primary and a secondary reflection. So in our current module design, we actually sort of stack these together. So we have a primary match for the secondary there and a primary match for the secondary there. So that's our basic mirror module design. And all of the really hard alignment problems and the sort of very fine bonding constraints are involved in making this module. Once you have that module, it's a unit that you can then build up an array from. You tie up the array, and that's our mirror. So our full mirror array is about 1.8 meters in diameter. That's my height, 1.8 meters in diameter. And then you package it in, you know, the mirror modules are held in a structure. They're sort of very low CT, low thermal expansion structure. You embed it in various baffles, stray light baffles, and thermal pre-collamators and thermal post-collamators, all kind of stuff to make it nice and stable. And that's our X-ray, that's an X-ray mirror. Just to show you some real pictures, this is a, this is actually the backside of a pair of segments that have been, again, it's now a little bit old. This has been aligned and tested. And this pair of segments achieves 0.82 arc seconds half-power diameter. So that's actually, when you look at our error budget for where we need to be in our optics, this is exactly where we need to be for then, you know, the other error term is to meet up to where we want to be. This is a pair of, this is part of a module being assembled in Will's lab. And then, you know, this is one of these mirror modules, which if you stop by the Axis booth, you can see a mirror module very similar to this one in our case. This is a mirror module that's on vibration test chambers. Of course, when you want to environmentally test these, you've got to make sure they can, for example, survive launch. So you put them on a vibration table, and you shake them, and make sure that it moved and make sure they can still achieve the requirements you have. So this is one of Will's test modules on that vibration chamber. So, you know, those of you interested in what we're doing right now with our Phase A money, for the X-ray mirror array work, which I'm showing, in some ways is the core of what we need to do in Phase A, we've completed our new mature design for the X-ray mirror assembly. And that includes this new, you know, two primary, plus two secondary module design I just showed you. Those of you who have paid tremendous attention to these things will notice that's different to our Step One design. And what this new design does is it gives us much larger spacing between the layers in our modules. And that retires a major source of possible technical risk here. So significantly more robust to, sorry, significantly more robust to have that. So right now, we are, a big major piece of work is we're building test mirror modules. And ultimately, we'll stack those up into a mini array to show, actually align them. We're building those test mirror modules to put those for environmental testing and show that, again, we can actually make the mirror the Axis requirements. So that's, that's of course, work in progress. We've brought a major new partner onboard. So Max Planck Institute for NPE in Garching. And this gives us, well, it's a general new partner onboard with very fully better optics and astroengineering capacity. And it gives us access to a test facility in Germany, a state-of-the-art X-ray test facility, Panta, which we'll be using for our Phase A testing at least, and maybe for full mirror testing later on. And then we're bringing onboard industrial partners who will actually create our manufacturing plan. And if we are selected, we'll actually manufacture our mirror. Of course, this is government, there's red tape. There's a lot of process to bring upon a partner who might get a very large contract. But that partner will be selected this week. But the selection process is going to run by this week for that industrial partner. So we feel very good about where we are with these activities with, as far as the mirror goes. So to quickly go through another part, we're seeing another crucial part of this mission. No good having a mirror without a powerful detector. So the detector is going to be provided by MIT and using the MIT Lincoln Lab CCDs. So it's the CCD ID, sorry, the CCID 100 chip, which Lincoln Lab is fabricating as we speak. And, you know, this is the latest evolution of chips that we actually all know and love. You know, chips that are in Chandra, that were in Suzaku, and now will be in Axis. So small pixels, of course, because we need that to sample our PSF. We plan to really sample that PSF properly. Large field view, see, we need a large, we need a large ray detector, and a fast readout. We need a fast readout because we have a large collecting area for the photopilot. So we have our detector. That will be embedded within a camera assembly. And one thing I'll point out here is that we have a contamination blocking filter. Those of you who know Chandra will know the problems that have existed with contamination buildup on the filter there and the loss of soft effective area from that. We've, you know, trying to learn lessons we can from that. And so we're making that filter warm. We have, you know, cold fingers to try to attract away all the contaminants so as to be able to possible to reduce the contamination in the optical path because we want those stopped photons. And this is some data from a prototype chip that from Eric Miller at MIT, showing that we exceed the requirements for our spectral resolution from even this close to a chip. And this will attain large to. Okay, so this is my last one slide. What is the timeline for this? So we're in Phase A right now. We have our concept study reports. And the step to proposal is to this November. And then, as you would have heard if you're in the town of NASA Town Hall, the downtime is expected to be early, or some point earlier next year, maybe late spring next year, with a spring 2032 launch. So many of you may feel that's a long way off. I feel it's very close. Build this, but that's, and then prime missions start, five-year prime mission with 70% observing time from day one, 70% observing time given to the general observer. So you'll see this slide several times, but remember Axis is a community project and it's for you. So this will take you to the website. And please consider getting a look. So thank you very much.
So we have time for some questions. If you want to come up to the mic.
Chris, this is a wonderful mission for the entire community. Two separate questions. First is, is the five-years lifetime of the mission is dictated by technical or it's more by funding or anything like that?
That's a good question. So the mandate of the AO is a five-year mission, prime mission, right? So that's what we have to have for a mission to be deemed a success. We certainly have a 10-year goal of the mission. And there's nothing short of reentry. There's nothing that technically will cut it off. The expendables we have onboard, unless we have any horrible surprises about orbital collision avoidance failures, that completely, the expendables should actually work for a long duration.
Okay. And my second to your question is, if you want to have a figure of merit, Chandra put several millions of seconds in the deep Chandra field. You guys are about, if I understand correctly, about 10 times more sensitive. Is that translate to you can get to the same depth at one point at a time and you cover a larger area of Chandra?
Yes, so it's a, the framework is a little more complex map because of those top patching. The Chandra sensitivity decreases off Axis because of the PSF degradation. Ours does too, but a little, much, much gracefully slower. You know, a factor of back now is like. But broadly, for short observations where it's just photon numbers, yes, the factor of 10 just carries straight and straight through. For deep fields, or our deepest field would be a 7 megasecond deep field, very similar to the Chandra field. And the detail comparison is a little more complex because we have to fight the background as well. But.
Thanks.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes. I just wanted to ask, is, what gives Axis its such a low PSF and such a wide field of view? Is it because of just like the size of the mirror assembly?
It's, that's a very good question. So it's a different, because of the technology we're employing, it's a different geometry of the mirror. It's a different sort of optical design. So the Chandra mirrors, I said, they're actually exquisite. Of course, for them, they were built. It was launched 25 years ago. They're long, they're these very long optics. And that length gives, means there's relatively strong aberrations you start to go sufficiently far off Axis. Our mirror array, because we've constructed it from a very large number of these segments that sort of spanned out, is actually quite a thin optic. So it's actually, it almost starts to approximate a thin lens, you know, something like this, which has good off-axis response. So that's the simple answer to the question.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes. For your resolution, the CCD, that's what you already achieved at all. So that's, what do you mean, about that 1.5 gig, it's a couple gig.
I think you have it there.
Yes.
I'll tell you the requirement is 7 gig to 0.1 gig. I think that's breaking what you're achieving. We're achieving that.
Great, so let's thank Chris for the presentation. Yes. And our next speaker will be Fabio Picucci telling us about supermassive black hole formation and evolution with Axis.
All right. Hi everyone, I'm Fabio Picucci from the CFA. And this second talk focuses on the high-racial science case for Axis. So the formation and the evolution of the first supermassive black holes. So Axis will answer many of the big questions posed by the asteroidoid 2000 survey. But in particular, for the first pillar of Axis science, Axis asks what seeds supermassive black holes and how do they grow? So in this presentation, I will present the two main objectives and also some of the ancillary science cases. So Axis will answer many of the open questions in high-energy astrophysics with a series of surveys that Chris was talking about before, which promise to reach farther, wider, and faster than ever before. And these surveys have one to two orders of magnitude deeper than existing ones, but they're also wide. And in this presentation in particular, I will focus on two surveys. Axis intermediate, that will survey about two square degrees in six megas seconds. And also Axis deep, surveying about 0.13 square degrees in seven megas seconds and reaching as deep as 2 into the minus 18 per second per centimeter square. So Axis, especially in its deep survey, will reach a farther outing redshift than ever before, obtaining a census of accreting supermassive black holes up to at least redshift 10. And this is consistent with the most farthest black holes ever detected so far with JWST and also Chandra, and just about 200 mega-years after the seed formation epoch in the cosmic dark ages. So first of all, what are black hole seeds? Well, black hole seeds are the first population of black holes born around ratio 20 to 30, when the universe was a few hundred million years old. So we've known of the presence of billions of solar mass black holes at very high ratios for quite some time. And however they formed from smaller units, they had to be fast, in about half a billion years. So if these smaller units are born in light seeds, so for example, form as remnants of population three stars, about 100 solar masses, then they had to grow fast. Otherwise, if they formed as heavy seeds, 10 to the fourth, 10 to the fifth solar masses, for example, a sterecolast black hole, they'd attempt this time constraints. So the first objective of the high-racial science case for Axis is what seeds? What are the seeds of supermassive black holes? And Axis will determine whether supermassive black hole originated from light seeds or heavy seeds by conducting a census of accreting supermassive black holes unbiased to obscurity. heavy seeds by conducting a census of accreting supermassive black holes, unbiased to obscurations, up to about redshift 10. So Axis will detect many faint AGN, it will detect also many bright AGN, and in general, overall Axis will be able to construct our AGN luminosity function up to about redshift 10, I was saying before. So the AGN population statistics provided by light, green, and pirate and ABC models in green begin to strongly diverge about redshift 8, and even more at higher redshift. In practice, supermassive black holes originating from heavy seeds will reach AGN luminosities of about 10 to the 42 per second, much earlier by redshift 10 or even earlier. On the contrary, supermassive black holes originating from light seeds will reach this luminosity later by about redshift 8. So the normalization, shape, and the evolution of the x-ray luminosity function from redshift 10 to redshift 10 will differentiate this seeding scenario. And in particular, Axis deep anchors the faint and normalization of the x-ray luminosity function, achieving about a maximum sensitivity that is necessary to detect a 10 to the sixth solar mass black hole at redshift 10 accreting at yet into luminosity, while Axis intermediate finds the rare luminous objects that are needed to constrain the x-ray luminosity function slope. Now, for the second objective, the seventh fundamental objective of Axis science in the redshift universe deals with the role of mergers in supermassive black hole growth. So beyond the initial seeding that we just talked about, the processes that grow supermassive black holes over cosmic times are very, very constrained. And one of the principal issues is the role of galaxy and the supermassive black hole mergers. So simulations show that mergers can funnel an enormous quantity of gas towards the center of the galaxy, growing the supermassive black hole. However, the observational evidence that connects the merger of galaxies with the growth of supermassive black holes is still unclear. So dual AGN, so a pair of supermassive black holes that are still unbounded, so pretty far away, but in the single galaxies, or in a single merging system, are unique observational signatures for merger-driven AGN growth. After the dual AGN phase, the galaxy merger processes continue, leading to the spiral phase, and eventually the merger phase and emission of gravitational waves. So the frequency of occurrence of dual AGN, overall, in the overall AGN population detected by Axis, in particular before, during, and after cosmic noon, so the peak of black hole activity, is a very important signature or their diagnostic for the role of mergers in the growth of supermassive black holes. So what is the current state of dual AGN searches? Chandra, of course, because it's of its high angular resolution, is a fantastic machine to detect dual AGN. However, in the X-rays, fewer than about 50 AGN have been detected, dual AGN have been detected so far, and most of them are really in the low redshift universe. So what is needed to characterize the dual AGN population up to about redshift 3, so up to cosmic noon and past, is a point source sensitivity that is necessary to detect a 10 to the sixth solar mass black hole at redshift 3 accreting approximately at yet into luminosity, and also a spatial resolution to distinguish sources that are separated by about 10 kiloparsec at redshift 3. So Axis will determine whether galaxy mergers are important in growing massive black holes by precisely measuring the dual AGN fraction from redshift 0 to about redshift 3.5. And Chandra, as I said before, as you can see in the golden point there, is very powerful, but is limited to the local universe. Axis instead will be able to measure hundreds of such systems up to about redshift 3.5, and most importantly, Axis will determine whether the supermassive black hole accretion increases with the merger stage in the blue line or not. So how many AGN, and dual AGN in particular, we expect to detect with Axis? So Axis intermediate will detect about 20,000 AGN, including about 1,000 redshift higher than 3. And regarding the dual AGN, we made two different estimates, which vary the dual AGN fraction, and an upper and a lower bound. And in the upper bound estimate, Axis will detect more than 1,000 dual AGN, around 50 at redshift higher than 3. Now, Axis fields will really be a treasure trove of data for many more science cases, and here we're listing only a few of them, but it's really up to the community to come up with more exciting science to do with the data that Axis will provide. For example, Axis will detect the productivity of GWST x-ray weakly to red dot at redshift 6, will provide spectra for thousands of AGN and clusters, will determine the evolution of the x-ray obscuration and measure column densities very accurately, and also will measure the black hole spin via relativistically broad nitrile lines up to about redshift 3. And don't forget that, as Chris mentioned before, Axis will have a very important geo program with more than 70% of the time dedicated to the community. So to conclude here, you can see approximately what is currently detectable in terms of redshift versus black hole mass, with the most advanced x-ray telescopes at our disposal so far. So we can detect very bright and distant supermassive black holes, intermediate up mass black holes up to redshift four or five approximately, and stellar mass black holes really in the local universe. So across the black hole horizon, there are entire continents of black holes that are completely undetected, and we do believe that Axis will be able to uncover many of these populations across space and time. Thank you.
Great, so we have time for some questions. So I have a question about little red dots. What can Axis do specifically in terms of resolving whether or not little red dots, you know, how x-ray weak they are, and what might be the process behind that?
Yeah, so little red dots are one of the weirdest population found by the GJST so far. They're typical before, between redshift four and seven. And in the AGN interpretation, the black hole is a new or massive, but at the same time, they are mostly undetected, given very deep surveys, very deep static analysis. So if the little red dots are, for example, accreting super and to not, maybe, because it's a redshift universe, so there are large availability of gas available for accretion of very large radiations, then it's possible that the STPs are intrinsically x-ray weak. So it's, in order to detect them, with Chandra, with Axis, we just need to go deeper, about some order of magnitude deeper, just as Axis would.
Great. So why don't we actually switch speakers, so let's thank Fabio.
So I am Admit Hodge's plug from NASA Goddard, and I am presenting on behalf of the Axis Galaxy Science Working Group to tell you a little bit about feedback in galaxies in the Axis perspective. So before you turn your attention back to your phones or email, I just want to have your attention for one second. What I want you to take away from this talk is two things. First is that Axis is going to reveal how stars and black holes heat the interstellar medium and circumgalactic medium. And the second is that Axis, in partnership with other facilities now and upcoming, is going to discover how feedback shapes galaxies from redshift 0 to 10. All right, now you can return to your email. So the Axis Galaxy Working Group, I mean, galaxies is a broad topic, right? There's a lot of stuff going on in galaxies, and these are just some of the things that the group is exploring. And for the sake of this presentation, I just wanted to focus on three that help define the mission. That is, how do massive star clusters impact their surroundings and their galaxies? Whether radio mode feedback is able to offset cooling in all-star galaxies? And when galaxy clusters first became enriched with metals? So first, how do massive star clusters impact the ISM? Well, to some extent, we already know the answer to this, right? Like, if you have a massive star cluster, it makes a strong atmosphere, makes an H2 region, it blows a bubble, sometimes these bubbles erupt into the halo and drive a galactic fountain. So what's left to answer here? Well, it turns out that, well, they don't always blow such bubbles, and the bubbles, even for clusters of about the same size, are not always the same. So what we want to understand, in order to understand how stellar feedback works to keep the dynamics viral star-forming galaxies that we know and love, is we want to understand how does the feedback potential of these clusters depend on mass, AGN environment? And when I say feedback potential, what I really mean is the amount of thermal energy, because that appears to be the most important factor in determining whether one of these bubbles is going to be able to project power far beyond the middle cluster. And only clusters that build up thermal energy should remain x-ray bright. I mean, sometimes they'll have a transient supernova, but on average, only clusters that build up thermal energy should be x-ray bright. And so what Axis is going to do is survey a large number of star clusters in order to suss out how the feedback potential depends on mass, AGN environment, by going far below the current limit that we have with Chandra, which is really, while exquisite observations have been made, is only sensitive to about the 10% of the brightest clusters, brightest star clusters that we know. And what we really want to do is see how the luminosity function changes down here. It turns out that a lot of H2 region quantities are covariant between models, and so the best way that we have, this is really a case where quantity has equality all of its own. If we can measure enough star clusters luminosities, then we will be able to, from the slopes of sub-samples depending on mass, AGN environment, determine which factors control the feedback potential of those clusters. And this slide here just gives you an example of why we need Axis to do this. So the Axis experiment for this science is to measure the x-ray luminosities from about 5,000 massive star clusters, and the image here shown on the left is a real image from Chandra, it's a megasecond exposure of M51, a nearby band design spiral galaxy. And the inset here, which includes the nucleus, has these little circles over plotted, and those are massive star clusters of the type that Axis will be looking for, identified by the LAGIS survey. And what you can see is that there aren't really any detected here. All the point sources that you see here on the left are x-ray binaries or supernova orbits. But with a much shorter exposure with the simulated Axis image, again, if you just looked at the inset using a realistic luminosity distribution, we are able to see all of those star clusters and discriminate them from the background of the ISM. And now all these x-ray sources that Chandra is seeing are basically, they show them as white because they're saturated, and Axis is just so sensitive that it's able to see these very faint sources, and it makes all these faint sources look very bright indeed. The second thing that Axis is going to do, that is going to sort of take the next big leap from what Chandra has done, is to determine whether or not jetted feedback can offset cooling in individual galaxies. So we already know from clusters of galaxies and from groups of galaxies that the amount of energy injected by jets, that's the cavity power here on the Y-axis, is enough to offset the cooling that we measure in the X-rays. So this black line is the one-to-one line, we measure the x-ray luminosity, we measure the cavity power, and we can see that jets are able to keep groups and clusters from cooling, they inject enough energy in order to make that possible. But we don't know what's going on down here at the lower left of the individual galaxy scale. There are reasons to think that this would just continue down, because the cooling luminosity scales with mass, indeed, early-type galaxies do tend to have smaller cavities, but there's other reasons to think that it might not hold, or that the relationship is different, simply because galactic dynamics are well different from dynamics in groups and clusters. So Axis is just going to find out. And it's going to do that by measuring the jet power from cavities in the survey of 21 all-star early-type galaxies selected from the Atlas-Sky sample. And this is a deep image of a galaxy that's actually observed by Chandra in GC5813, but this image is showing here why we need Axis. So in order to measure the cavity power, we need both the pressure and the cavity volume to measure the amount of work that it took to inflate that cavity, and therefore using the lifetime of the jet to translate that into power. And if you take a 100 kilosecond slice of the total Chandra exposure and adaptively bin it to about 1,500 counts, which is what we need in order to get the appropriate precision on pressure in order to make a useful measurement, you can see that the Chandra really only measures the pressure in the very central regions, but with just the same amount of time, you know, Axis is able to get up much, much further. And for this whole system that has like these two active cavities and a couple relic cavities, and a big bay out here that's even another relic cavity, is going to be able to measure the pressure profile out the entire way, and that's going to allow us to measure very accurately whether the jet power is able to offset cooling. The third topic where Axis is going to make a huge leap is in understanding when galaxy clusters first became enriched with metals. And this is an interesting topic, not just for understanding galaxy clusters, which are of course very interesting on their own, but also for understanding the overall history of enrichment of the universe with metals. So what I'm showing here is a plot of the iron abundance as a function of cosmic time of redshift, and these blue points are the existing measurements made with Chandra, XMM, and Suzaku. And right now, our measurements go up to about redshift 1, and they're consistent with either constant or slight decline in metallicity of an iron abundance of about a third solar. We don't see the point at which this enrichment happened, it happened further back in cosmic time. And you can imagine different scenarios, but the idea is that AGN start dragging up metal-rich gas and throwing it onto the cluster, and the time scale over which this happened will determine, you know, where these points will fall if you go out even further. And in these simulations by Anthony Flores, you know, we show that Axis is going to be able to very decisively determine, you know, what is that time scale, and therefore when do galaxy clusters become enriched with metals. And the reason you need Axis to do this is because you need very high sensitivity to the low surface brightness gas that happens to be in a place where you also expect a bunch of AGN that are bright point sources, because they're the things that make the feedback. So this image shows, there's three images of the same simulation of a redshift 3 coma progenitor. On the left is Chandra with marks, in the middle is Athena W05, on the right is Axis. You can see that Chandra cannot detect the ICM, Athena cannot resolve it, it's there, but you just can't tell because of the bright point sources. But Axis both detects and resolves this red fuzzball, and you can measure the iron line from this, and therefore get the metallicity. So I know I went through that very quickly, but those are the three, what Chris called the directed science program objectives for feedback for Axis. I think they're all very exciting, will make groundbreaking results, but as has been said again and again, 70% of the time is for you. You know, most of Axis is a community-driven mission like Chandra, so I just want to highlight very briefly a couple ways in which Axis works with partners in order to make groundbreaking measurements. So here I'm showing Axis and new Athena working together to reveal the plasma conditions in galactic outflows. So there's two types of outflows. Here, one on the top is a star burst outflow on M51, the bottom is a Seaford galaxy in GC3393. And what you can see with Axis, in the simulated Axis data, is that Axis maps out where the emission is, and you can even do it in individual emission lines, whereas the exquisite spectral resolution of Athena, as we already saw and have tasted it in the Crisim special session this morning, allows you to map out the plasma conditions. You can do, measure the ionization parameter, metallicity, temperature. And so the combination of Axis and Athena is going to allow you to do tomography of galactic outflows in a way that's really going to tell you how and where these outflows couple to the surroundings, how they quote-quote do feedback. On much larger scales, Axis and Roman are going to show how galaxy formation creates the cosmic web. So one of Roman's key topics is to understand when and where do structures form, and the way that Axis is going to help, this is a figure made by Maxi Margovic, is to figure out, this is a dark matter simulation in the background in purple, but this white contour shows where Axis would be sensitive to x-ray emission from the cosmic web, and this is possible, unlike with Chandra, because of the incredibly low particle background in the Earth orbit relative to the Chandra orbit, we can see how the galaxies that are forming these structures then return energy and material to the cosmic web, which then of course modulates future accretion onto those galaxies. And finally, Axis and GWST are going to be able to witness compact objects shaping the first galaxies. So Fabio showed in his presentation this deep survey, I'm showing here a simulation of a deep survey example field. It's based on the CDF South, it's not actually CDF South, but this just shows the Axis versus Chandra and an inset of a random field as this has built up over 5 million seconds. But what I want you to pay attention to is the bottom plot here, showing the number of source density as a function of flux, and that pretty much every depth that Chandra and Axis get to, in the same amount, same observing time, Axis observes more than an order of magnitude deeper. And because of the luminosity function, that means it's getting an order of magnitude or more sources in the same sky region. And what that allows you to do is, not only all the stuff Fabio talked about, but one thing he skipped over, which is to look at the x-ray binary populations in normal star-forming galaxies that don't have AGN, and Axis, like, all of those live down here. galaxies that don't have AGM. And Axis, like, all of those live down here. You know, redshift seven or eight, X-ray binary-dominated galaxies live down there. Axis is going to detect a whole bunch of these things. And that's going to tell us how star formation led to whatever end products are producing the X-ray binaries, and therefore, how population three stars worked. So I realize that was a lot in a short amount of time, but I think that's, you know, AXIS is jam-packed with exciting stuff. And if you are now also interested in Axis, please, again, thank you for coming to the session, but, you know, sign up to write a science book investigation or come to our community workshop. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any questions? So I have a question. So in terms of the populations of X-ray binaries, how will Axis be able to kind of survey much more distant ones? Like, to what redshifts can you go? In the deep fields, like, what fraction, like, in the deep field, what fraction sources will be X-rayed, you know, kind of more distant, non-AGM?
Right. So if you look at work that's been done on the Chandra deep field already, for example, by Ruth Mer, we find that at the very low end of the luminosity function, the faint end of the luminosity function, we actually transition, there's a slope change in transitioning from being dominated by AGM to being dominated by galaxies. And so in principle, Axis is going to discover, you know, thousands of galaxies in the deep field at redshifts between six and eight. It sort of depends, like, I see Kristin's in the audience, she's worked on this. We don't know exactly what the X-ray population of these galaxies are, but based on looking at low redshift analogues, at low metallicity, the X-ray binary total luminosity goes up. And so, you know, the reasons for that are not completely understood, but there's this expectation that we will be able to, even based on what we see with Chandra stacks, that Axis will easily be able to detect many, many individual systems.
Okay, great. Well, let's thank Edmund.
multi-messenger science with Axis.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for sticking around. For people that are getting tired, there actually are some extra seats up front. So if your feet are getting tired, your legs are falling asleep, please don't hesitate. Our team is pretty nice. So I'm going to be talking today a little bit about TDAM science, time domain and multi-messenger science. I'm presenting on behalf of the Time Domain Science Working Group, which is pulled up by myself and Brad Chekow, who's here somewhere, maybe. Sorry, it is, my friend. And really, on behalf of a fantastic core group of people that helped put together the white paper, which I'm drawing a lot of the science results from today and a lot of the plots. And so, thank you in particular to all of these people. And as upholders have already emphasized in their talks, I want to say that we now feature 150 Working Group members, which is just, like, overwhelmingly awesome. So thank you to everyone who is excited about this science case and that wants to join us. Brad and I are going to get around to organizing a call soon. So if you haven't heard from us yet, you know, come track us down at this meeting. We'd really be happy to talk to you. So you've seen this plot now several times. My mission today is to talk about this last item here, what powers the diversity of explosive phenomena across the electromagnetic spectrum. And I want to say that you'll probably see this again in errands and other talks, but one of the things that is really exciting, and you heard Chris emphasize this when he put up NASA's fleet, is that we can do time domain science with Axis in concert with a whole bunch of other observatories coming online in the next decade or two. Bruman, SKA, ground-based gravitational wave detectors, space-based gravitational wave detectors like LISA, INA, James Webb, Roman, et cetera. So this is a very, very exciting time to be contemplating a mission like Axis. And all of these cross-mission science cases are things we hope you will develop with us and are very important for time domain. So this is what I'm going to use as my sort of motivator a little bit for my segment of the science highlights. I really love this. NASA made this for us. Thank you, NASA, whoever it was, the scientists or artists that made this. But this is the periodic table in terms of astrophysics. And I just love this because it makes me feel really important as an astrophysicist. People always ask me when I do press interviews, you know, why does this matter? Why is this important? And this is my go-to response right now. Like, you know, the periodic table needs astrophysics. We are, we are, all of us here at this meeting are responsible for a lot of this stuff. The people responsible for this stuff, I'm not so sure, you know, what, I don't know. But anyway, a lot of these things, you'll see our binary sort of neutron star mergers, other explosive phenomena, supernovae, et cetera, really give us a lot of the important elements that we, that we really need in our lives and in our bodies and in our planet, but that we also are very curious to study in our science. And so this is a much less beautiful version of what Edmund had up here just a minute ago, some of the breadth that we explore in the Time Domain Science Working Group. And so you can see here in this plot, everything from flare stars and dwarf novae at nearby distances out to binary neutron star mergers, ultra-miss X-ray sources, and also tidal disruption events. I'm only going to talk about a couple of these different things because it's just more than I can talk about in 10 minutes. So I'll highlight just a few of these. But if you see yourself fitting into this plot somewhere, please don't hesitate to join our group. And in particular, the things that we dovetail with in the ASTRO 2020 decadal survey are, once again, just, you know, coming back to that periodic table, how are heavy elements produced? How does multiplicity affect stellar lives and death? This is a very, very interesting thing that, of course, gravitational waves have started to show us a whole lot of new outcomes. And how are jets launched? So you've heard this come up, both in Edmund's and also in Fabio's talks. Jets are very, very interesting. They seem to be imprinted or the byproduct or the main product of many, many different types of astrophysical systems. And so these are also interesting in many transient systems. Chris already emphasized this, but I would just say one of the powers of the AXIS mission is that we have onboard transient detection and also very, very good sensitivity. So long-term monitoring of transient events even as they fade is another fantastic asset that we gain when we launch a mission like Axis. SWIFT is an incredible mission at doing this work, but we need Axis to take us further, out in particular to some of these very, very high redshifts, which are compelling and exciting for some of these sources. So I'm going to start by talking about neutron star mergers. I said I'll just cherry pick a couple of science cases here. One of the things that Axis is aiming to do is to look at, identify, monitor multiple neutron star binary mergers in the era of, we think this will be in LIGO A+ or maybe LIGO A' if, depending on how the naming schemes work out in the longer term, but O4, O6, and the future. Cosmic Explorer and also Einstein Teller's book coming online. And one of the things that we, you know, we have one example of these that we've been able to monitor on the X-ray, so not a whole lot of examples, but we have a lot of models because theorists are brilliant and hardworking. And so we have many different possibilities for how these systems might emerge and how we might monitor them over time. So you're seeing a sort of a standard Top Hat Jet model being viewed at a variety of different off-axis angles in these different colors, and then a power law core and a Gaussian core model, some different varieties of jets that we might be able to tease out with the sensitivity of emission like Axis. So on this plot, you're seeing the flux at 1 keV versus time. And you can see that in order to distinguish some of these models, we actually need observations fairly early, which makes that two-hour turnaround time for getting TOs uplink to the observatory and getting on target is really important. And of course, some of these are much fainter and will fade to very faint fluxes over time. And so once again, that sensitivity is very important. I'm really worried that people are going to forget, because, you know, we talked about GW1708, 1708, 17, sorry, I can't say it anymore, so much. But this is a really spectacularly weird short gamma ray burst. We can see it at these very faint fluxes as it rises to its peak, and then it kind of follows this trend that we've seen for short gamma ray bursts. And this source is really, really fabulous and very faint. And so we need a high sensitivity to follow sources like this, and in particular, to monitor them. And I cannot resist just, you know, shouting to the raptors how completely cool it is that Chandra can still detect this thing, right? Very sensitive X-ray observatories are amazing. We can detect this maybe out to like five and a half years post-merger. And people are now debating and arguing about whether or not there are additional afterglows as the Kilanova actually shocks against the interstellar medium, not just the jet, which gave us all of that really interesting initial afterglow emission. And so these extra X-ray afterglow components are really compelling, really interesting. There's very, very tentative evidence for them. And so a suite of sources like this could really open up this field quite a bit. Of course, right our neutron star rates are highly uncertain. We don't exactly know what we're going to see, but we really, again, just to hammer this home, we need the sensitivity and resolution of an instrument like Axis to be able to go out after some of these rare sources and track them down and find them. And we do expect this trend to continue. You know, it is ramping up, and we're going to learn a lot more of this science cases, the gravitational wave observatories mature over the coming years as well. Another very exciting science case for Axis is core collapse supernovae. One of the things that Axis has an amazing power to do is to actually distinguish different types of progenitors for supernovae. And so what you're seeing here is the X-ray luminosity on the vertical axis and the time since core collapse. And you can see that these different types of progenitors have very different light curves, and we can monitor these and actually distinguish between those progenitors. And we can do this out to very high redshift. And so this is a very exciting way of actually tracing back to the stellar population that gave us some of these core collapse supernovae. And this is a little bit of a confuse-gram. This is a beautiful piece of work trying to combine together a whole bunch of different types of core collapse supernovae, and also stealing this gorgeous figure that Fabio put together, showing you the current Chandra limit, and then pushing back. You can see all these little reionization bubbles, right? These supernovae are contributing to what's happening in the universe at these early times. And Axis is really the mission that's going to push us back here. This is the 10-kilosecond horizon redshift, you know, pushing us back to redshifts of one, two, and three for many of these core collapse supernovae. Really, really important for understanding what's happening to these populations at early times when reionization is ongoing. What about other kinds of interesting types of progenitors? Axis is also going to help bring us information about the origins of type 1A supernovae. These may be coming, in some cases, from AMCDN, double white dwarf type binary systems. Maybe you'll hear a little bit more about that in this, in this conversation today. This is the two masses, the primary and secondary mass of those. And this is going to be a very interesting and synergistic science case with LISA, which really considers these double white dwarf binaries as one of its kind of most pernicious foregrounds, but also a very interesting science case to hang our time domain hats on. The last one on LISA, I'm running out of time for, but I will also say that there's a whole unexplored territory of fast X-ray transients that are maybe connected to FBOS, which are these fast bright optical transients, or tidal disruption events, or some other kinds of very interesting sources. And we expect our number densities of these systems to be very high, and these to be very interesting sources. These are a couple of sample light curves of what those might look like compared to one beautiful system that Chandra has recently found, pushing out to much, much major fluxes with Axis. So of course, I could only talk about a couple of things, a few of the topics that I think are most exciting and evolving most quickly right now. But all of you are experts, can bring your expertise to bear on many of these different interesting types of systems, and we hope you will do that by joining our team. Here's our beautiful sort of survey field that you've seen before, the obligatory barcode for you to please join us. We would really, really love your participation in this science case. And I will just say that I'll take any questions, and I hope you'll come and talk to us more about time domain science.
Great. So does anybody have a really quick question? Okay, actually, let's move on because we're a little bit. Oh, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, just really quick. How do you, so are there plans already in place for like a discretionary time or some sort of interruption of the mission plan at this point over here?
Yeah, so we're going to have a very robust target opportunity program. You know, of course, those can be proposed for or interrupted, you know, through discretionary time or other kind of rapid TOs. Also, as Chris mentioned earlier, we'll have an onboard monitor. So if there's something that goes bump in the night while you're looking in a particular direction, we'll also have a sort of automatic transient trigger. So there are at least three, if not more, ways of triggering, you know, very, very high yields of time domain object shift.
Okay, great. Let's thank Daryl. Okay, so our next speaker will be Kevin Burge on the Axis Galactic Plane in Ball Service Science.
Okay. I know we're short on time, so I'm just going to jump right into this. So you just heard a lot of science. I'm actually going to focus more on a data product of this talk and hope to get everyone excited about using it. And so I'm just going to cut to the chase. If Axis flies, we have earmarked 100 square degree survey of the intergalactic plane as well as the bulge with arms extending down into the lower column density region of the bulge so that we can get super soft sources and such. And we're going to detect a lot of this. So let me give you a brief overview of this. For comparison, you can see the outline of the Chandra bulge survey there as well as its galactic center survey. So we're covering a lot more territory. It's six milliseconds per pointing. That's equivalent to about 42 milliseconds of Chandra on Axis per pointing. To give you an idea of the sensitivity there, that gets you to better than 10 to the minus 15 ergs per second per centimeter squared for a power law source with an index of two. For comparison, the Chandra bulge survey was two kilosecond pointings. And it's going to be a cadence time domain survey. So it will be sensitive to discovering transients. And of course, people, it will also produce an incredibly deep reference image of this entire region that people could then propose CIO surveys in and do further time domain surveys. So just to give you an idea of depth, and I know this is a bit hard to see, I don't like simulating fake data, so I took a real Chandra pointing, 42 milliseconds of data on the left in the bulge, and I ran source extraction with five sigma detection. And I bet those white circles are sources I detected. You can see an inset showing you kind of the details of the photons for one of them. It's clearly detected. On the right, I just downsampled to the first two milliseconds of that event file. I detect no sources at five sigma. That same source only has one photon within its PSF at that depth. So we're getting much deeper than any of the surveys that have been conducted in the bulge. And one of the primary science cases that are my favorite things, double white dwarfs. So looking for the progenitors of type 1A supernovae. This is a real movie of HM Kangry. It's a five-minute accreting double white dwarf made from XMm data. We're going to try to look for these, especially in the bulge. This is the loudest LISA gravitational wave source known. So these are sort of beautiful multi-messenger sources in the X-ray and millihertz gravitational wave. So what gets me excited, though, is in addition to the ultra-compacts, this is a figure from the original Chandra bulge survey paper. And the black bins show quiescent low-mass X-ray binaries. And then in the background, you see there are a large number of CDs and intermediate polar, so accreting white dwarfs. And they, in the paper, show this figure to say, hey, we chose our survey depth here because we kind of maximize the ratio of LMXBs to accreting white dwarfs. I like accreting white dwarfs. I don't necessarily think that's a great metric, but I can understand the metric. But the problem is, is most of these sources are barely at the detection threshold of the survey. So you may detect them, but you only have a couple photons to work with. The beauty of our survey is, we're not only detecting almost the entire population in quiescent LMXBs, the lion's share of that population is so far above our detection threshold that you actually have hundreds of photons to work with. So you get spectral information and also variability information. And you can do this on an enormous scale because of the amount of ground we're covering. So just to give some rough estimates, and these are very rough because they're extrapolated from a handful of really deep Chandra pointings around the galactic center and in the galactic ball. We expect more than a million X-ray sources in this 100 square degrees. That's order what Erosita detected all sky in a 100 square degree patch. In those X-ray, in that catalog of X-ray sources, we expect about 1,000 high-mass X-ray binaries. This would be about an order of magnitude expansion over what's known. Most of those are going to be in the inner plane. You also expect on the order of 100,000 low-mass X-ray binaries, probably mostly in quiescence. And one of the things I'm most excited to try to find in that group of low-mass X-ray binaries is the first eclipsing black hole low-mass X-ray binary, because we still don't know of one. Okay? So anyway, a lot of what I just said was kind of playing up the advantage we get from Axis's effective area. It's giving us a lot of depth because it just gets a lot more counts than Chandra. But now I want to talk a little bit about why the PSF is so important. And I'm going to open this discussion by quoting a colleague of mine, Paul Schechter, who one day came down to my office, and he looked me in the eye and he said, "The PSF isn't everything." If you know Paul, you know that's a very uncharacteristic thing of him to say. And so I was waiting for the punchline, and of course it came. He said, "It is the only thing." Joking aside, I want to talk about why the tight PSF over the full field of view here is so powerful. When you do a survey, what you want is uniformity across your field of view. You're trying to cover a lot of ground, right? And so we've already seen this plot that Axis's PSF- And so we've already seen this plot that Axis's PSF does not degrade nearly as much as Chandra off Axis. And that's important. And so to give you an idea, again, let's look at some real data. Here's a very deep Chandra image in the bulge. The X-ray sources are crowded. You can see sort of confusion noise matters here, even with Chandra's on Axis PSF. But what was very difficult about doing surveys with Chandra in the bulge is you go off Axis in the same exposure, and that's what it looks like. So it significantly limited the depth. And this came up in the Chandra bulge survey design, in which they said basically they threw out everything outside the inner seven arc minutes because it just wasn't usable given the degradation of the PSF. Axis gets around that by not having that PSF degrade over the full field. Okay, and now as a sort of wrap up, I want to talk about sort of something kind of unprecedented that's coming, and it's the multi-wave length opportunities. And they really illustrate why you need that PSF. So the surveys aren't defined yet, but I've been told that 1,000 square degrees is not an unrealistic number for the amount of the galactic plane and bulge that will be surveyed by the Roman Space Telescope to Hubble Space Telescope resolution. So here's again a Chandra image in the bulge. And you might say, well, you don't really need a one arc second PSF here. Other than that little source at the bottom there, you're not really confusion noise limited. Well, if you want the Roman counterpart, you better have a one arc second PSF because that's what an HST image of that field looks like. So to give you an idea, let's zoom in here. So you can see with, even with Axis's PSF, you've got several potential counterparts. The Chandra on Axis one is quite nice. Chandra off Axis, you'd really be in trouble trying to figure out what the counterpart is. And so this is why a one arc second PSF is so vital in these regions, especially in the era of Roman. Also, say Ruben is also going to be doing a time domain survey here with sub arc second resolution. And hopefully that camera's going on any week now. And then the last thing that actually kind of got me excited is, okay, let's just go to an image. Say you find an amazing source in that galactic plane survey and you say, "I need spectra of this," but it's obscured. JWST is the only thing that can do it. And you go, "Well, I still have five sources in my Axis error circle. I don't know which one to point JWST at." Well, it turns out a really powerful spectrograph on JWST called NearSpec is an IFU. And Axis's PSF conveniently fits nicely within the scope of that 3x3 arc second IFU. So all you have to do is point NearSpec at it, and you will get a spectrum of your source. You don't have to worry about figuring out precisely which one it is. And I know I'm out of time, so I'm going to wrap up there and just leave up the survey footprint. Thank you.
Great. So we'll actually have time for questions after Aaron's talk. So let's thank Kevin for doing his talk.
All right. Thank you so much for sticking around. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about some guest observer prospects for Axis and ways to get involved. And hopefully you're all here because you're looking for ways to get involved. So you've seen this slide before. The point is that, you know, the science that you've heard most about today is the PI-led science. It's 30% of the exposure time in the first five years of the mission. But 70% of that time will be for general guest observer science. And a lot of that guest observer science, we're hoping to do also fast time domain targeted opportunity observations as well. So I wanted to go through a few of those investigative, you know, kinds of investigations that you might potentially be interested in doing. And I really want to highlight that the reason that so many of us are excited about Axis is really that it's just so general, all-purpose, that it really hits on like every aspect of modern astrophysics and especially those that were highlighted by the 2020 decadal survey. So I'm going to go through one example in worlds and suns in context, new messengers and new physics, and cosmic ecosystems, et cetera. There's time. So the first question is related to exoplanets. So, you know, exoplanet atmosphere is now is one of the hot topics with the James Webb Space Telescope. We're hoping to launch the Habitable Worlds Observatory in 2045 or so. And it's really looking, the point is to find Earth 2.0, right? But one of the major questions that we still need to understand for habitability, right, is what is the effect of that host star on the exoplanet atmosphere? How does stellar activity impact exoplanet habitability? And in particular, stellar flares, coronal mass ejections can really cause degradation of that, of the atmosphere, make the entire atmosphere escape from that exoplanet. And understanding the effect of the star on the atmosphere is one of the major unsolved questions in habitability. Another way, you know, my favorite way of asking that question is like, why do we live around a G-type star? I think that's a really cool way of thinking about it. Like, you know, we know that M-type stars are way more abundant. And so why is it that we live around this G-type star? And maybe the answer is, is that, you know, in these M-type stars, stellar activity is way more prominent, right? And so it's perhaps, the problem is that there's so much irradiation of these exoplanet atmospheres, and you really can't get habitability on these types of stars. So this is really what Axis and Field is really trying to understand. So one of the things that we can do is to look at what is the effect of X-ray irradiance, XUV irradiance, on these, on these exo, from these stars on these exoplanets. And X-rays are really the best proxy for measuring the XUV, the total XUV irradiance on these exoplanets. And so this is an example of two different stars plotting, let's see, the planet radius as a function of age of the system. So starting here. And depending on how much X-ray luminosity from the host star you're kind of shining onto that exoplanet, it will change dramatically, you know, the end radius of that exoplanet, right, due to that XUV radiation. And perhaps it's thought, it's theorized that this may help explain in the planet orbital period phase space that you see all these different exoplanets. There's a dearth of planets in what we call the Neptune Desert. And it could be that it's just that because of this XUV radiation, that's what causes these planets to, you know, not exist in this region of the, of phase space. So this is one of the things, you know, that we're trying to understand by measuring X-ray activity from different types of stars at different mass and ages. So you can, one of the proposed GEO investigations is to look at different open star clusters and do a cadence time domain survey of different star clusters that kind of get you different stellar ages. And to really, you know, do this in a cadenced way to measure the stellar activity with mass and age. And you can see Axis spatial resolution is really important here because these are very crowded fields. And you need to do this, get a lot of photons in a short amount of time so that you can do this in a cadenced fashion. So this is 150 improvement of overseen good art. And now with the Chandra lack of soft X-ray response, it's really just impossible now to do. So that's something we're extremely excited about, potential GEO investigations. Now moving on to new messengers and new worlds, new messengers, whatever, time domain science with Axis. This is a plot that you've seen from, from Daryl, just showing for all sorts of kinds of time domain, transience, GRV afterglows, TDEs, stellar flares, X-ray binaries. This is comparing the horizon that you get with Axis compared to the Swift horizon. So one way that I like to think about this is that we're making all of this investment into optical time domain surveys, right? ZTF to Ruben is about a hundredfold improvement in sensitivity, right? And so we need, unfortunately, Swift horizon is just not going to cut it anymore. We need to go 100 times deeper. And that's exactly what Axis gives us over Swift. And still, we're still maintaining these strong time domain facilities. Two-hour response time. We have this transient alert monitor to find these transients and alert the community within 10 minutes. So next, I'd like to highlight one science case that is near and dear to my heart, tidal disruption events. And in the past five years or so, there's really been kind of like, I would say, like a very surprising result in tidal disruption event studies. And it's an X-ray specific result in that some of these TDEs show what we call quasi-periodic eruptions, flares in X-rays every few hours to days. And one of the best models or current models for explaining these quasi-periodic eruptions is that it is, these are supermassive black holes where a tidal disruption event has occurred. And you have a disk formed in these systems. And you have an orbiter, a stellar mass orbiter, maybe a star, possibly a black hole, that is interacting with this crashing into the secretion disk and causing a flare, you know, twice per orbit. So we want to test this model. We want to understand like, how often do these QPEs occur in tidal disruption events? Are they indeed due to orbiters? And, you know, how long do they last? What types of systems do you see that on? It's really like the face space, the discovery space, I'd say, is really vast. And what we need is an instrument that can really do, you know, fast slewing to kind of monitor these systems over time. We need to get, you know, Ruben is going to see like 1,000 TDEs per year. And we need to follow them up in X-rays and track which ones, for instance, see this QPE behavior. If these are indeed orbiters around the supermassive black hole, they should be emitting gravitational waves, low frequency gravitational waves. And so you can see for a sample of QPEs that we have observed, these are, you know, if they are orbiters, these are the kinds of systems mass ratios that we would expect. And this is, you know, they should be emitting gravitational waves. This is where they would fall on a characteristic strain versus frequency plot. All of this is where LISA will be able to detect sources. And QPEs, many of these hour-long QPEs may be detectable though with LISA. We have observations recently of a millihertz similar kind of system with millihertz oscillations that if it's an orbiter will be smack in the LISA bandpass. And so this, really, we need, when LISA flies in 2035, we need an X-ray time domain telescope to see these systems and, you know, at the same time, these multi-messenger systems. I'll wrap up with one final cosmic ecosystems example. Here is, show you the millennium simulation, how large-scale structure develops in the early universe. And we know that, you know, here at these very overdense regions is where clusters will form. And all of these little dark matter halos, you'll see galaxies form in the clusters of the deepest potential wells. And we want to see like, how does matter build up? You know, how does the large-scale structure build up? So here is an example of one of these as a simulation of a cluster in the cosmic web. And this is an exposure, you know, a simulation with what you would see with Chandra, 100 kilosecond Chandra exposure. You see the cluster, but you're not able to reach out to the burial radius because of the higher background of Chandra, the lower effective area. Here's the same exposure, the same observation now with Axis. And I love this because you can really see now out beyond the burial radius and you see structure from, you know, connecting to the cosmic web with Axis. So that's, those are three types of GEO investigations that I wanted to go over. And now I want to tell you, if you're excited about any of these prospects, how you can get involved. And you're going to see a bunch of QR codes in all of the following slides. So I want you to get your cell phones ready. So here, starting out, we've been really, we have like just an awesome team. And they're led by these great people. So we have five topical science working groups, Stars and Exoplanets, Galaxies and Clusters, AGM, Super Roma Remnants and Compact Objects, that's the Galactic Plane Survey Group, and Time Domain and Multi-Messenger. And we are welcoming all of you to join an Axis topical science working group. They meet regularly and talk, you know, it's a good opportunity to just talk about new results, new ways that you might get, you know, how you might use Axis. So here is a link to sign up to these topical working groups. We have been really just like blown away by the community, the outreach of support. We have had 500 people sign up to be members of the Axis science working group. So keep it going. And we've also, you know, the thing that's new about this, this call, this GEO, this call for missions is that it's so much like heavily weighted is the guest observer potential of these missions. And so we want to hear, you know, we've come up with a few ideas, but we do not represent, you know, all of the ideas. And so thanks to ChatGPT for putting this beautiful science book together for me. It was funny because like it kept on like messing up. It used to say astrophysics. It's not quite perfect, but we did, it's fine. So we're putting together an Axis science book of all of the investigations, the potential observations that you might want to do when Axis flies. And we were asking the community for, you know, tell us about your ideas. Tell us about how you like to use Axis. You know, there's potentials here also for helping us construct like, how do we do the surveys? We were going to do an extragalactic survey. We're going to do a galactic plane survey. What's the ideal cadence? What are the ideal survey fields? Like, these are things that we want input from the community, right? So tell us about it in an investigation. There's also the potential for, you know, GEO legacy surveys. That's something we haven't even really thought about, but this is really where we need to be going now. So hopefully it's not too big of a lift, two to four page of science investigations. Great opportunity to build a team, make new collaborators. And we have the first draft deadline by February 21st and the final deadline by June 15th. And really, you know, the point of this is that we, we really want to hear the ideas. We want to incorporate, you know, all of the observing strategies that we can. And we want to do that before, you know, the end of this Phase A. So we have time to incorporate that in our CSR study. So here is a link now to sign up to just, you know, add your name to a science investigation or create, you know, think of your own science investigation. And this is just a Google Doc spreadsheet. And so you can see what ideas people have come up with. You can, you know, contact people if you want to get, join their group. And again, we're just total, you know, blown away by the community coming up with like 250 and more science investigations that have been proposed at this link. So please join us. Finally, we are now have solidified a venue for an Axis community workshop. Hopefully we'll have an opportunity to talk about these guest observer investigations that have gone into the, that are going into the science book and potential survey fields, et cetera. So tell us about what you're interested in with Axis. Come to Annapolis. It's a beautiful little historic town. And the abstract deadline will be around March 15th. So final QR code here taking you to the website. Lastly, come to the Axis booth. We've got right in the exhibition hall, right? Like one of the first, just 20 steps or so into the exhibition hall. Got lots of stickers, lots of cool pins. And you can see those modules, you can see the segments, the optics. And yeah, just excited to be here. Thanks.
Great. So we'll open it up for any questions for anything on Axis.
Thank you. Given the, not even a question, but given the 37 split between GI and GEO, will there still be opportunities for there to be sort of joint submitted forms between different instruments, say, in Axis and GPT, or things like that that are really supporting us?
Gosh, so yeah, the question is about joint observations between Axis and different instruments. I mean, like, I think hopefully it convinced you that there's like so much synergy. And that's like the point of doing Axis is that it does match well these other observatories. So we, basically, all of that is like out of our hands. It's the coordination with other facilities. But, you know, given every, every mission that is up basically does do coordinated observations with other instruments as time goes on. So I totally anticipate that that will similarly be the case with Axis.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Steve Kirby. I'd love, I don't know if this is an engineering or interpretation question or a question about X-ray observations of local objects. Do we know what the optical filter will sort of loading magnitude for optical loading in the detector for observations of local objects? Optical photons piled up to the detector and X-ray photons? Is the loading magnitude for that?
I can answer that. The short answer, well, right now, we're not. It will be probably. But it will be probably, I was going to say somewhat similar to Chandra, but that's not actually true. We have a thinner filter. So if you want to look at Jupiter, there could be some problems with where the stars become something. But certainly, any of the scientists who talk better today should be.
Other questions? Chris, did you want to say anything?
Well, this is one of the next questions.
Oh, nevermind.
I have a technical question as well, just curious, actually. But with the lower orbit, to maximize efficiency, are you planning to point multiple times? And then, what is your instantaneous field of regard, like with regard to sun annual constraints?
Yeah, I don't have an actual number on the field of regard. But yes, we are repointing to maximize observing efficiency, and I think it's around sixty-nine or seventy percent right now. So do you want to take the?
That's right. So the field of regard is we avoid the sun by forty-five degrees, both the sun and the anti-sun forty-five degrees. And then we avoid the bright earth by twenty degrees. So for our altitude, that puts our effective horizon five degrees below, below horizontally. So depends where the sun is, as to what our field of regard is.
But these constraints have to be factored in with these GEO responses, obviously.
Yep, yep, yeah. So then we keep the observing efficiency high by having an agile spacecraft that could repoint. Is, in a swift mode, basically, we can repoint.
I was going to ask, well, Swift can repoint within six seconds, so what's, that takes two hours. I'm doing my impression for going to the pop right now.
So, yeah, whenever you put a number like two hours, you're going to have some worst-case scenarios. And in that two-hour chain, you have to assume that the alert comes in just when your source is setting below the alert. So you have to wait for the orbit to come out, so the least terms, actually, just waiting for the source to rise. So many scenarios, you're on target faster, much faster to a point, so now there is a time. You have to process it through the SOC, the side work to actually trigger, you have to process it. Come up with a revised observing plan, there were fixed, there were fixed ones there. So you're putting it on target in less than one hour, and you start to, you start to screen it. And there is actually a still in time, this is a final story.
Actually, I have a more serious question. Why did, why did Chandra and New Star have higher orbits if they were in worse radiation environment? Is it just so that they have longer time on orbit?
New Star is actually in a, is in a lower orbit. It's actually lower than our orbit.
But Chandra was another one.
Chandra, I mean, Richard can speak to the Chandra decision.
Well, yeah, the basic idea, it sounds weird, is to save money by making it non-replaceable, non-fixable.
It was originally designed.
Yeah, so the original, original Chandra was supposed to be, you could replace things and fix things with astronauts. And then they found out that was obscenely expensive.
Yeah.
And then it turns out, back then, we thought that by putting it in higher orbit, you'd have very high observing efficiency. Chandra does get a high efficiency. And back then, we thought that with the detector background of Chandra being, you know, one pixel per day, that was low enough. And we didn't really examine this new science of low, low-surface brightness type science. Things have changed a lot in thirty-five years.
I will say the orbit decision, I mean, the trade space there is actually quite a complex one. There are advantages, you can orbit, there are some advantages to it and disadvantages to it. So its impact has a, yeah.
Yeah, just, what I didn't say is harsh or incorrect, but it's also hugely important that the orbit that Chandra is in has a much smaller avoidance region than Earth because Earth is far way small. And Chandra had been established from six years before. So loss of effective area was traded for higher orbit efficiency. And that was something to be aware of, part of the discussion.
Yeah, just as a comment, the particle background in Earth lunar space was not well-known at that time. So things like, Chandra almost died the first month because of radiation damage, it was simply not in the models. So, like I said, things have changed a lot.
Yeah, another factor is thermal stability. So lower orbit, the temperature oscillates.
Yes.
So we can design the stables about that, or is it in larger orbits, you don't have to worry about that.
Right, if you fly in cryogenic satellite, the orbit is much better.
Yeah, of course, I mean, the orbit is not, it's not a simple decision, it's something with scratch data, it's about, you know, multiple ways. You're thinking of the trade study there. The low background and then for time domain science, the comms, anyways, well, of course. If you've been in some of the discussions of TDAM infrastructure, the communications infrastructure needed for TDAM science is not actually the good stuff. And so you're much safer bet to go orbiting through the interals if you want to have on-arms problems.
So is, is the comms infrastructure reason why you didn't go with like a highly liquid orbit?
That's more important.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming. And I'll just leave the last words for Chris, if you want to say anything.
I just want to say thank you all for attending. I really hope, echo everything Aaron said, I really hope that you can get involved, you're interested in getting involved. Get involved at whatever level you feel you can. It's not signing the life away, I don't think, it was QR codes. Whatever level you think you can, you're pleased, and thank you for coming.
And can we get a photo with the Axis team members? And that's if you even just sign up now, you're welcome to get a group photo. Thank you.